We thank our IT department for the work that they've been doing to help us get this done, as well as the chairman's meetings and everything that we're having to do during these tough times. Did someone else just come on the phone? Jim Miller?
No, Tim is broke. I'm just trying to mute, sorry.
Okay. All right. First of all, there's a couple of things that we need to make sure that we are taking care of tonight. We can go as long or as little as we need to. Probably the biggest timeline is setting up the 45-day period. If I'm showing you, I'm going to go back and share with you. And it's on our webpage. Let's see, it takes me a few seconds to get it shared. There we go. On the Nitrana County page, this page was set up a little while ago. It's got the parks' rules and regulations review process. And it's talking about our role as a parks advisory board. Notice, it says that we are not the final rule-making authority. It says we play a crucial role in advising and guiding the final decisions made that'll be made by the Nitrana County Board of Commissioners. Once the board is comfortable, or the parks advisory board is comfortable with the proposed revisions, it will vote at a regular parks board meeting on whether the B O C C should engage in formal rulemaking. And then, it is a minimum of 45 days. And then, prior to adoption, the B O C C must hold a formal public hearing, after which it may adopt the rules as recommended, or as amended, or reject them in total, or table the matter. Once adopted, they will become effective upon filing with the Nitrana County Clerk. So, you know, I want to be clear that once we put it into the 45-day period, it may be amended, you know, as decisions are made and things like that. But it will not be final until the Board of Commissioners makes a vote and then files it with the clerk. And at that point, and where we're at now, we are, we're looking into middle of May before we can make these, before we can make it final. Because at this point, we have not, look, Jim, you are on audio, good job. We are not, you know, we're not in that 45-day period yet. So, we, you know, the reason for this work session is so that we can make a decision as a parks board. What more do we need to do? Now, I'll go back to the whiteboard here. You know, I put on the whiteboard, you know, some of the priorities for tonight is to set up this timeline to begin the 45-day process. We've got this as a priority, the review comments from the public, and we have many comments. Everybody should have received the comments from AdBay. You should have received the comments that we've sent, that the public has put into our emails, either by myself, by Eric, or through our IT department. You received a lot of information on that. And then, all of you have had conversations with people, and we've also recorded public comment at all of our meetings. And those were, I believe, recorded, but as well, but not added to minutes, anything that we needed to add into the other comment things. So, from there, tonight, we could go through the rules and talk about needed changes. The rules are, I'm going to take you back to this page. It takes a few minutes to share this stuff, so please bear with me. On the Parks Rules and Regulations Review Process page, we have set up the current parks' rules and adoptions at the bottom right, under Quick Links. And then, there is the proposed rules and regulations that you guys have already been working on. And when I click on that, it has all of the proposed rules, and it has any of the items that you guys have been working on as additions. They're already on there. I think our IT department has worked well to make sure those things are getting on there. For some of you, I know this may be your first time seeing this, it is there. So, our job is to take these over the next, you know, to whatever we decide from a work standpoint, how we take these and get them to our commissioners with a recommendation from the advisory board. I believe that the commissioners would like for the majority of these questions to be answered before we get it to them, because you guys have been talking to the public. So, I guess at this point in time, Roy, let me turn it to you. Hopefully, everybody can hear Roy. And then, Roy, help us decide what, where we need to go. Do we want to look at these rules point by point tonight? Or do we just want to make a decision to, you know, to divvy up some responsibilities and be ready to talk about it at the advisory board meeting?
What I would like to do is, if we just, basically, since we're not going to be able to have public comment tonight, I would like to just start at the top of the rules and just go through each section, and then kind of get a straw vote from the members that are online as to whether we agree with the proposed changes that we have, or whether we have a significant issue with that particular section. And so, basically, what I'd like to do by the end of this is we go through the document and then identify what areas we still have big concerns with, and then focus our attention to those specific areas.
Okay.
So, my opinion would be if we just start at the top of the document and just kind of go through it and see what the board feels like that, where we're at. And then, we can make a decision on to, as far as whether or not we're in a position to recommend this to the B O C C.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, this is Eric. So, just a couple of things. I spoke with Tim, and so I know that there's a couple areas that, based on our feedback and previous discussions, are going to be the flashpoints, in particular, the Bridle Trail and Rotary Park. I mean, you can view them as one or two issues. And so, my hope and desire had been to really populate the webpage with additional documents and be able to come to you guys today with more of a definitive kind of analysis. Given everything that's gone on in the last, really, three and a half weeks, I've been completely waylaid working with the Health Department, and I'm candidly not, I haven't done that, and I'm not ready to speak to those. So, I want to just throw that out there. I think that, you know, during your discussion, the choices are going to be pretty clear. But, you know, when we talk about the 45 days, really, if there was, if we were able to make a decision tonight, which we're not going to, the soonest that the B O C C could adopt those would be May 19th. And if we waited till April 9th, which is the regularly scheduled advisory board meeting, that would push out the earliest decision point for the commissioners to be June 2nd. So, it's really about a two-week difference. So, what I would propose with regard to what I know to be the kind of hot-button issues that, you know, knock on wood, hopefully, we'll have some breathing space here. And between now and April 9th, we will have the ability to push out some of those background documents. And at that meeting, with regard to at least these two specific issues, I can come and give a more detailed, you know, overview, I guess, or opinion upon which the advisory board can determine how you guys want to go. Because I think in order to recommend initiating rulemaking, we have to have a proposed rule change. So, we would have to determine which way we're going on those issues, which I think you're going to look to me for guidance on the legal part, which I'm just not prepared to do tonight, so.
Right. And that was one of the things I was going to refer to you in that fairly quickly, Eric, before we started talking. Mr. Chairman, maybe a point of action tonight is to start at the top. But with the ones that are going to be the hot-button topics, we could actually table that and make that part of the agenda on the April 9th to discuss that at the beginning. And then, at the end of the meeting on April 9th, then we could decide whether we're ready to make a recommendation, or whether we need to table it for further. Does that sound about what you were thinking, Eric?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's right. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that I can from the board this evening, but I just wanted to kind of be upfront and put that out there.
Okay. All right.
And I guess, well, I guess where I'm going with it is, and this is Roy, I'm guessing that, assuming that as we go through, we actually might be able to answer those questions based on the information that we already have at hand. And I would just, I'd just like to get a temperature and just kind of feel that out and just see, you know, how much do, does the board think, how much additional work does the board feel like we're going to have to do? So, and I guess my feeling is, I would like to go through it tonight. Let's look at everything, including a couple of those hot-button issues. And instead of just tabling them, we're going to have just a kind of a quick discussion, you know, based on what we've heard from the public already. You know, can we potentially propose something on that next scheduled board meeting? So, that's kind of what I'm looking at. If we can, we can, and I'm fine with that. But, you know, we may be able to come to a consensus now, is what I'm thinking.
Okay. We'll work through the best way we can, and then, I think, from what I'm hearing, is if it's a point of question, where it looks like it may be a question where more legal questions need to be asked, let's at least ask, raise the question so it can be noted, and then give Eric a chance to work on that and potentially have an answer for us on the 9th.
Yeah, I think that's what I would like to do.
Okay.
And that might be the best use of everybody's time. I don't want to waste this. So, anybody have any other strong feelings, one way or the other, with that?
Well, this is Stuart. I agree with you. Let's just go ahead and move forward. I think we may have a decision tonight. Let's find out.
Let's see, let's see if we can, let's see what we got.
Okay.
So, let's just start at the top, Tim, if you would, and let's just move through it.
Okay. Section 1, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. That's, you know, that's one that has to be there, basically, the decision-making authorities when it comes to the parks' rules and regulations. And then, where it goes to, that these rules and regulations supersede all such previous regulations. Section 2 deals with the applicability. Then, going to the definitions, I think two of the definitions that have been in question have been electric bicycle. And that may be one that will grow over time, because it may be one that'll change. Are we comfortable with the definition of electric bicycle there?
This is Roy, and that is one that I've spoken with Eric about, and our intention was to go with the Wyoming State statute, and there, the Wyoming State statute definition of electric bicycle, and just follow that.
Okay. All right. Good information. Fat tire bicycles. They're, I had a conversation with one of our law enforcement guys yesterday who wanted to give some input. It says 2.16 inches or wider, designed for low ground pressure to allow riding on soft terrain. There may be other dimensions when it comes to fat tire bicycles. Is it necessary that we put the size of the rim in there? Or can it be one that we just simply call a fat tire bicycle and leave it up to interpretation? That's just a question.
What I would propose, this is Roy again, what I would propose on that one is, we can remove the part of the definition that says rims, 2.16 inches or wider, but leave in the part that says oversized tires, which are 3.8 inches or larger.
Okay.
So, I would propose leaving in 3.8 inches or larger. That is an industry standard.
Okay.
And it's very easy for somebody to check, such as law enforcement, if they were looking at a bike, it would be very easy. If it has tires at least 3.8 inches, it's written right on the side of the tire, very easy for them to see that it is meeting that requirement. The rim size, I don't believe, needs to be in there.
Okay. All right. Good point. That's one of the things that the law enforcement guy said would be a tougher one to, oh, somebody's dogs all over the place. But yeah, that's something that they said, that they suggested as well, so that's good. Anything else on this page when it comes to the definitions? Okay. Hearing silence. I'm going to move on. Looking through these, it's, most of these are pretty clear. You know, the quiet, a lot of times, that's up to the interpretation of various people, but that's a pretty good definition of it. Now, anything on this page, guys? Okay. Abandoned property. Everybody okay with that definition of it? Looks like it's not really been an issue before. Okay. Now, we're getting into Section 5 with the aircraft, powerless flight, UAS, and bungee Basically, you know, you can see where the amendments have been asked to put in there. My question is, because this was before my process, was this, this information put in as a result of advisory board, or individuals just finding things that have been a part of some of the committees in there?
This information, this is Roy, this information from G on, I believe that's all worded by Eric Nelson, and that is directly from the UAS regulations.
Okay.
And this is Eric. I would concur. So, there was some changes based on those regulations that were inserted when this first started to circulate, gosh, a couple, year and a half ago or something. And then, I've made some changes based on federal regulations, and I think in previous meetings, Roy, we've worked, missed some of that as well.
Okay. Good.
Yes.
And what I'm seeing in Part C of this, basically, it says the direction of superintendent or director of Parks Recreation Leisure Services. Basically, superintendent means, basically, if I'm not there, it's whoever is in charge at that particular park that is a staff person, the way that I saw the definition earlier. Is that correct?
This might be a question for Eric Nelson, because the intention is that, exactly what you said, if the director of Parks Recreation and Leisure is not available, then, say you had a subordinate that was there, that they could make that happen. So, we just need to word it accordingly.
Right. And I believe that was in the definition, superintendent was listed. Is that basically a person that, in the absence of a director, can make that decision? So, it gives them the authority to be able to handle it. And ideally, in most situations, if law enforcement is there, we're going to give them the opportunity to handle it instead of us, because of their ability to handle the crowd control a little bit easier. So...
And this is Eric. I think that is the intent, and I think that's the way I read it, that...
Okay. Great. I see no issues with Section 5. Anybody have any input on this?
We talked about that pretty extensively last fall, and kind of went over all that stuff, and Eric was in there, and so was Roy, too. So, I think we've got that, I think that's pretty clear as far as where we need to go on that.
Okay. All right.
I have questions on Section 5 if I could. This is Stuart.
Okay.
So, we're basically, we're saying that we can, they can fly drones. Is that what all this is saying?
This is Roy.
They have to follow these rules, but our input basically said, no, only use them for park reasons, you know, go search for somebody, mapping, et cetera, but not for public use, not for recreational use. Correct?
This is Eric. I think, yeah, I think you're correct. I think the way this is worded is that they would be allowed, subject to these restrictions, so...
So, what it says in Section 5, Sub B, basically, it says that you have to have either the safety of human life, so it would be an emergency issue, or with prior written permission of the board. So, if that's the way that I'm reading this. But, again, I made the same argument when we had the previous work session, is the problem with this is enforcement, that you can say no drones, but there's virtually no way to enforce it.
Okay. Now, and help me on this one. Thank you for pointing this part out, Stuart and Roy. Prior written permission of the board, and according to definition, anytime board is written in this document, it's Board of Commissioners. So, does that mean every time we get a permit for someone wanting to launch one of these, that mean we're taking it to the Board of Commissioners? Or is it something that the Board of Commissioners can give us at the Parks Department, based on these rules, to issue a permit, according to this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I actually completely misread that. What that Section B is saying is that you cannot do air delivery of anything by a means of an unmanned device without prior written permission.
Right. This is Eric. Right. That's correct. That subsection B does not apply to UAS at all. And so, to answer, Tim, your question, board is the Board of County Commissioners, or they're designee in the definition. But if there's going to be UAS flying in county parks, I mean, G through N as currently written, just are the sideboards around that ability, that they have to comply FAA regulations or park regulations, whichever more stringent. I mean, you guys can read it, I won't read it all, but...
Yeah, yeah.
They're not categorically excluded.
Okay.
Right. And this is Roy again, and in my opinion, this is just my opinion, and we can have discussion. In my opinion, I think that if we try to exclude drones completely from park areas, that we will be creating an unenforceable situation. And my opinion is that we make it contingent on following FAA regulations, and everything from G on is directly from either Part 107 or Part, the UAS regulations. So, anybody operating that would not be able to operate over people. They would not be able to operate during any emergency. That's all by regulation.
Okay. And I guess I'll go with, I'll piggyback off Stuart's question on this, because I know that he had expressed it at an earlier advisory board meeting as well. In those regulations, you said, over people, over homes, over things like that. And that would give us, if there is a complaint, then it is an enforceable thing if they're doing that. Is that correct?
It's enforceable under the FAA regulations, either Part 107 or 337.
And that would mean we'd need to make sure the law enforcement officials understand what the FAA regulations are pertaining to drones in the parks.
These are drone regulations in all airspaces.
Right, right.
So, it has nothing to do with parks. It's unmanned aerial systems anywhere, in any airspace.
So, this is Eric, so just to kind of expand on that, so that is correct. I mean, there are some additional prohibitions, and I think that they do track the FAA regulations. I think we, and this is starting to come back to me a little bit, we talked about, there was, you know, it didn't hurt to kind of reiterate some of those things, where that they shall not fly under fairer emergency operations, under the influence of drugs or alcohol, out of line of sight, et cetera. So, and they can be cited either under the federal regs, or if they fail to follow any of this, then it would be a violation of the parks' rules. And then, the, you know, they have to discontinue use upon the request by, you know, all those people that are listed, or law enforcement. And so, failure to discontinue use upon a request would be excitable as well. So, I think there's some wiggle room in there. I guess it doesn't, I mean, we don't have to have sheriff deputies that are experts on the FAA regs necessarily, but we've kind of reiterated, I think, the most important parts, probably.
Okay.
I still think we ought to just ban them completely, other than for use for, as stated up there, for the federal government, et cetera. And just make it easy, then, if there's one out there, sheriff's department knows right away, it's given parks' rules. I believe you can find some of these people, especially in some of our parks. Yeah, there are going to be times when you can't, but I believe that you can find them. And, you know, that's also what we've gotten out of all the comments, et cetera. I think we ought to put that in there. Let's just not allow them. Should we take a vote? What, you know, what's everybody else think? Dave? Jim?
Hang on, just one second. Let me make one more comment. This is Roy again. I'll just make one more comment before we do the vote. I agree, we need to, we'll go ahead and vote, but I'll just throw this out there. So, drone use is prohibited in national parks. It's also prohibited in most state parks. The problem is with enforcement, that if you are flying a drone from a public area, you can fly over the national park or state park airspace, and it's completely legal, as long as you take off and land from a public area. That's completely legal. So, the situation that you put law enforcement in is if somebody is flying a drone from a public area over a county park, then law enforcement has to chase that person down and prove that they either took off or landed from the county park area. The airspace itself cannot be prohibited. Airspace is not protected. So, what you're not, what won't happen is if, let's say you're at the lake, and somebody flies from another space that's not county park area at the lake. If they're taking off and landing from a public area, there is nothing that law enforcement can do about that, unless they're flying in a specifically prohibited airspace, like around an airport.
That throws a whole new kink into the situation.
Yeah, that, that's why I'm saying it's.
I mean, it really does.
It's all a snake.
Everywhere we've got, every park that we've got, we've got public land that's right adjacent to the parks, or even private property that's right adjacent to it. And if they can take off and land from there, that's going to make it really difficult for us to enforce anything at all.
And that, that's the point that I'm trying to make is, is it, it's virtually unenforceable the way our county parks are laid out. They're surrounded by state, like BLM land. You can take off and land from BLM, no problem. It's not illegal. You can take off and land from public land. You can take off and land from your own private land and fly over the county park, and there's nothing law enforcement can do about it. That airspace is not protected. Even over a, a national park, if I wanted to fly over Yellowstone, I can take off from outside the park and fly as far as my line of sight will let me, and there is nothing that they can do about it. It's, it's not protected that way. Now, if I took off from the, from the national park, inside the park boundary, or landed inside the park boundary, they can take my aircraft. One of our aircraft that we fly is $8,000. They can take that away from you. But as long as you fly it from outside the park boundaries and land outside the park boundaries, there is nothing they can do about it. It's not enforceable.
I'm going to step away from that one page for a minute. You can keep this discussion going. I want to make sure Tina sees the conference number, in case she's still not getting the audio. Two, three, five.
Yeah, I did send her that in a, in an email, but I didn't know if she had seen that or not, so.
Okay. Two, three, five, nine, five, one, eight, Tina, just in case. Of course, she's not seeing that, but I did. Somebody happens to have her text number, maybe you can send it to her. I'll go back to the page now. All right. All right, we're back on it. All right, Roy?
So I, and this is one of the reasons why I pushed so hard for this. I, I think that what this does, the way it's written in the proposed rules, is it gives law enforcement the opportunity to basically make people, or they, they, they're enforcing the federal regulations. That, that's what they're doing. So we can say, no flying over county parks areas, people can still do it, and there's nothing that law enforcement can do about it.
This is Jim. If we say that they need a permit, will that help?
No, because you cannot control the airspace. The only entity that has control of the airspace is the FAA. So the FAA has to say that this is an excluded zone. Now, now, just, just for an example, if we had a huge event on the mountain, let's say Bear Trap Summer Festival, and we have 3,000 people up there, you cannot legally fly a drone near that event by FAA regulation. It becomes a temporary exclusion zone. And if somebody was flying a zone over Bear Trap Summer Festival, the law enforcement can arrest that person, they can take away their equipment, they can take away their drone by current federal regulation. But nothing that we could do in parks regulations would increase their ability to enforce that.
Roy, what's that say as far as, how many, what is the number of individuals before you can't fly over?
One. You cannot fly over any individuals.
Okay, but what's the distance? Because you and I both know that that's, you do that inadvertently.
Um, it's, uh.
I mean, I, I know the regulations.
It's generally recognized as four.
How that works, but.
It, it's generally recognized as 400 feet. So if you were to fly closer to somebody than 400 feet, you would, you would be considered to be flying over that individual.
Okay. So that, that is the, that is the number. So if you're 400 feet high over that individual, you're still not within that distance which you have, that you have to worry about.
Um, if you fly over that individual, then there's a, there's a chance that your, if your drone failed and could fall and hurt that person, you would be responsible for that.
Well, I, yeah, that part I understand, but as far as enforcement is what I'm talking about. I mean, you're always.
Yeah, I'm talking about laterally is about, is 400 feet. So basically, if I'm, if I'm flying a drone and I fly in a, you can basically draw a circle around somebody with a radius of 400 feet, and you cannot fly inside that circle if they're not you. Like, like if I'm the drone operator, I can fly the drone over me, but I cannot fly it over somebody else, somebody who's not, not the drone operator.
In the interest of time with this one, this looks like it could, could need some more discussion, because we, we don't need to make a specific vote on this tonight. We can actually look for more clarification on it, and it can actually be discussed in further at the, at the Advisory Board meeting on the ninth. Because again, tonight is just a work session. All we're going to do tonight is kind of try to come to a consensus. And the way the work sessions work, we'll try to come to a consensus, but if, if it looks like something we're going to get tangled up on, let's look for some more clarification on this, so that we can be prepared to discuss it on April 9th, when we would like to try to make a recommendation. Does that sound like a plan for you guys?
Well, Stuart, Stuart said earlier, you know, let's, let's go ahead and just take kind of a straw vote. I mean, we could do that. I just wanted to make sure everybody had that information.
Eric, is, is that right? Eric, is that correct? We could take a straw vote here? Or is that something we just, please advise on that one?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I mean, you guys can certainly take a straw, kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down vote. I mean, it's, it's not going to be binding. I mean, this is a work session, but I think that's, that's pretty typical. And then when we get to the April 9th regularly scheduled meeting, you know, we, we can have at least the draft that you're considering reflect kind of, you know, the informal kind of thumbs up or thumbs down that you give tonight.
So I, I think we should do that. Did we get Tina back?
So she keeps trying to call in, but is having a really hard time. So she's going to, she's just going to keep trying. I texted her the number that we're all on, that's not Zoom, and she just, it's not working.
So I guess, what does everybody think? Just kind of a roll call, thumbs up or thumbs down? Stuart, what do you think?
So thumbs up or thumbs down? Thumbs up on the way it's written, or thumbs up is, yes, let's allow them? Thumbs down is, no, we don't?
I'd say thumbs up is, we go with, with the way it's written. Thumbs down means it needs to be rewritten or reworked.
Okay, I'm thumbs down. I don't, this is so confusing.
How about, how about Jim?
I'm a little bit, a little bit with Stuart. I think we've still got some work to do on it. You know, I guess I could go thumbs down, but if we had some more talking about it, I could go thumbs up.
And how about Dave? What do you think, Dave?
Mine's halfway. I kind of go.
Come on, commit, man, commit.
You don't, well, the thing about it is, I, I hear what Stuart's saying, and I hear what you're saying, but I think, I, you know, I think if the average person reads this, you know, and that's what they're going to do, they're not going to go look at what the federal regulations are and other stuff. A lot of people are just going to look at this, and that's as far as they're going to go. So, I mean, from a legal aspect, I think what we have is perfectly fine, but from the common, common guy, that's not going to go in and do the research and find out what the rules really say, I think we have a problem with it. And that's the reason why I'm kind of, I could go either way. I do think that we need to probably clarify things a little bit more before we put it to an official vote, you know, one way or another. So I guess right now, as far as accepting the, the verbiage that we currently have, I'm, after the discussion we just had, I think, I think there's a lot of us that are, still have a lot of questions about it. So because of that.
Okay, that, that's fair enough. So that definitely, we do not have the support to push that through. So we'll, we'll table that, Section 5.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a note of it, that we are going to table Section 5 to revise. Let me add to it, just from a, to think about standpoint. From the park standpoint, drones are sometimes necessary tools for what we do. So I think, you know, going back to some of the conversations with being able to permit for special events, for mapping, and various things like that, being able to work with some things with GIS. So I think, you know, using the terminology to ban them totally, you know, from, I, I think from an administrative standpoint, from my, my view, that would be very tough to do. But from, you know, just to consider that when we're doing the revision. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, agreed, absolutely.
Yep, I agree. Let's move on.
Okay. Uh, Section 6, Authority to Enforce. I believe everybody has, I mean, there has been no extra comment when it comes to this one. This is pretty, pretty simple, straightforward when it comes to state statutes. So we'll move on unless anybody sees a reason to stay there. All right. Camping. Looking to see if there's been any, there's been no additions when it comes to this. I think one of the clear things that I'm seeing, even as a director, is you're looking at designated locations, and the, and the rules give us clear definition of that. But I'm not, I'm not seeing where anybody has commented on any of this. So any reason why we need to stop at the camping one? All right, good.
Uh, this is Roy, and, and my only question there would be, will the camping section be, will we be able to use that section as is, as we move towards online reservation systems?
Yes. And that, basically, because what this, what the, the thing that it looks at here, no person shall camp overnight at a park unless such overnight camping, camping has a valid permit. Permits are required. And it also talks about designated locations. And one of the things that the online will do, as well as, and this gives us, whether you're doing online or first come, first served, it gives, this set of rules gives us the ability to designate where the camping spot is, as well as how many people can, can go in there. And I think, it's the individuals permitted to camp for a maximum of 10 days. I would say the only thing that, and thank you for bringing that up, Roy, I think the only thing that we probably want to look at as a addition to this is maybe adding in the campground section, the amount of people that can camp at specific sites. Because it currently, it's not, it's not in there where I'm seeing it in the rules. And depending upon the campground, I think that we can write it in the rules and make it campground specific. Eric, is that a fair enough way to look at it?
Yeah, I mean, you certainly could do that.
And that would mirror what a lot of other parks do, and it would put, it would give our staff the ability to enforce if it looks like there's 15 people on a specific campsite. And I think in doing that, we are making a step towards making the user experience a stronger experience. Because if you're camping by somebody that has 15 people on there, and you're obeying what the, in a sense, the rules of the outdoor world are, you're keeping a, probably four or five in the campground, it's going to interfere with your experience. So I think, you know, and I will look at making an addition to that, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm good with that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So am I.
Me too. Jim?
All right, that's Section 7. I'm writing as we go here. All right, anything else on this one, guys? Looks like it put in there, the Board, Director of Parks, basically, me, may establish a reasonable schedule of visiting hours for all portions of the county park. That, this, all of this reads real well. The Alcoa Trailer Park Sewage, Lagoon, Order Supplies, how it's restricted to authorize personnel only, okay? All of this, that reads fairly good. Any additions to Section 8? Section 9, Conduct. Looks like there's been a red line put on this one. To create a cir, circumstance causing inconvenience or annoyance which disrupts or disturbs the orderly operations or enjoyment of the park or its visitors, no person who is under the influence of alcohol or any other substance to agree which renders them a hazard to themselves or shall be permitted in county parks. Question I've got is, Eric, do these, is, does that red line, is that an enforceable line?
I, I think it is. I mean, I think it's enforceable. I mean, you know, from a legal standpoint, it is. I guess you'd have to ask the sheriffs if, if they see any issues, but I mean, I think that they were involved when we added this, and, and they felt that it was, is enforceable. But I don't, I don't see anything.
Okay. And the majority of times, if, if they are, if anybody's actually approaching a person, if it's our staff or anyone else, we need to be able to state what the probable cause for approaching them in the first place was, and state that to a police officer. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, now you're getting into some gray area. I mean, they can come up and ask for ID, you know, pretty much anybody.
Okay.
Probably, we do want to, we don't want to stop and frisk, but, you know, and then if they see these indicia of, of, you know, intoxication, or they're acting in any, any way that would indicate public intoxication, you know, so I, I, I think that there's enough there to, to allow it to be enforceable.
All right, good, good.
I, I think, I think that Bart and John are the ones that actually added that in there, that wanted that verbiage, if I remember right.
I believe that's correct. I think that's exactly how that happened.
Yep. That's what I'm thinking too. I couldn't remember exactly, but, yep.
All right. There is a, a section of green there that I'm having difficulty reading myself, but it looks like all of that has been crossed out when it comes to a tres, trespass individual. Somebody want to give some explanation on that one?
It was, that was a determination in a previous work session, that if you look just above that, subsection small i, that, that it's just repetitious, it's unnecessary.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that being the same way. So just a duplication that we didn't need.
Okay. Um. Um, I think that's probably enough on that section. Any, but anything else on section nine? And here comes section 10, domestic pets and livestock. basically, in every one of our parks, it basically will, gives us the ability to put on there, um, dogs need to be on a leash less than 10 feet in length. and then there was a, a part that was left out. Again, it's another one of those statements that everybody felt like needed to be taken care of. Grazing or ranging domestic animals is prohibited. Um, anything else as far as pets are concerned?
Um, I would go to the, uh, subsection F, if you can scroll down just a touch. So that, it says, uh, or section E, it says grazing is prohibited without prior written authorization by the Parks Department or appropriate federal land and management agencies. I don't know if that needs to read similarly to the other parks where it says, uh, the Parks Recreation and Leisure Services Director.
I think that's the reason why we left that, we left that federal land in there, because it's like on Fondrosa Park up there, there's all that BLM that's associated with it, as well as state and county land that's all intermixed.
Yeah, I, I agree, that needs to stay in, but I'm saying where, where it says Parks Department probably needs to read the way that it does in the rest of the document.
Right.
Superintendent or Parks and Leisure Services Director.
Hello?
It also needs, yeah, hey, Tina?
Hey!
Hey, Tina!
I just had to make sure I could be heard. Oh, my gosh. I have to sleep three or four zoom to not have this problem. So I, I, I don't know, but I'm on.
Awesome.
I'm just gonna listen right now.
Okay. Um, so Roy, what I'll do is I'll make a note that anywhere where it says Parks Department, I'll, I'll, uh, look and see if it's something that we can change in, in the verbiage, because that may be at a few other places, um, in the document.
Yeah. And this, Eric, I, I agree, that would be a, that would be a good, uh, change to make just to ensure kind of consistency in, in, in verbiage.
Okay. All right. Um, any, anything else there?
Well, I think you need to renumber those as you go from E to G, so just clean that up.
Okay. Good point, good point. Uh, re- renumber section 10. All right, this, this, does this gives, give us anywhere in here the flexibility that, um, you know, we don't have, you know, like as, in a lot of other parks where we have ball field areas, but areas where people like to let their dogs run around and chase a ball and various things like that. Um, you know, again, rules are there for when you need to enforce them. Um, you know, it's one of those things that, uh, you know, I think one of the frustrations on some of the parks is when, when dogs are running alongside their, the fat tire bike or, um, running alongside the skier or, or the, the jogger somewhere, um, is that's something that we need to enforce. And this rule gives us the ability to enforce it, that they need to be on a leash, uh, less than, or no longer than 10 feet. Is that correct?
That's all right. I'm, I'm quite surprised that we have not had anybody throwing a fit about this one. I personally, I think this is another one we're gonna have enforcement problems with because I would say over, I'd say over 70% of the people up there probably do not have their dogs on a leash.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think, I don't think that's ever enforced, is it, Roy?
I, I've never, I mean, I always see, if I see people up there with dogs, they're almost never on a leash. And I'm, I'm quite surprised we haven't had any public comment about that.
We have had some public comment. Um, and it, this is a, it's a nationwide, uh, communication, um, concern where, uh, people are, are questioning that, uh, because there are some people that are on trails. And I'll say it's one of the things, there's some parks that have banned dogs, period, in certain sections. Um, you know, I don't think that's our answer, um, but I think, and being able to have a rule when you need to enforce it is important, because there are some hikers, uh, some people in the world that are, that have a phobia of dogs. And it's unfair to that person that if a dog just runs up to them, because that dog is not on the leash. Um, and I mean, it can, it can definitely, uh, prohibit somebody from having a good experience in the park. So I think it's important to have it as a rule that our people can enforce.
I guess what I would say, Tim, is, um, if you could research that, if you can come up with language that is, say, uh, like an industry standard in parks, that is better, better than what we have here, bring that to the, to the meeting on the night. This, you might note this section and, and look, look into that, because I don't know.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll, uh, I'll look at some potential best practices, and if they, uh, seem to be better than this rule, um, then, then we'll look at it. Um, but yeah, any other comment on that?
Yeah, I do. Uh, you know, there's a lot of places that have, have something that, it doesn't have to be a physical leash, it has to be under the control of the owner or the person that's, that's accompanying that, that animal. That is a common law in a lot of places. Uh, so that's not something that's just taken out of the air. The problem that I have with limiting dogs is, I understand what you're saying completely as far as the responsibility, you know, and, and actually curbing somebody else's experience. But we live in Wyoming, we have wild animals here, we have pears, we have mountain lions, and sometimes that's going to be your best defense against an animal like that, is just having a dog along with you. So what we're looking at, you know, if they're on a leash, that's one thing, but, you know, there are very well-trained dogs out there that when they're told to sit, they sit, you know? They don't necessarily have to be on a leash, and, and so that's the only problem that I have with that, you know, as far as controlling that. But, you know, I was kinda looking, or maybe train the, the second half of that statement, and we could actually put that in there, or, or a well-trained dog that, that's under the control of the, the owner.
And, and Dave, I appreciate that comment, I, I do understand that, but that has been one that's been debated nationally, um, when it comes to, when it comes to the word, uh, under control or well-trained, that is a statement that can be argued. Um, at least if we make a rule in the parks that says, um, leashed, and, you know, that, that leaves no room for ambiguity on that one.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that's something that is, has been looked at when it comes to the best practices, uh, because under control for you may be one thing, for me, maybe something totally different.
What about, what, what about the guys that take their labs out to Pathfinder and want to train them?
Yeah.
You can't very well put a lab on a leash and throw a stick or a toy out there into the water and have them retrieve it.
Okay, and that's where the, the, the statement under, underneath there, it says, dogs may be trained with permission of the board, superintendent, or director of parks. That's where, if it's a situation that they need to be off-leash, we have that published, and, and they would need to come through, uh, through me to, or whoever the, the director or whoever, if there's a superintendent there, to get that permission. But that permission needs to be written down according to the way this rule is stated.
Yeah, and that, that's where I have, I, I guess that's where I have the biggest problem with some of this, is because, but there's a lot of guys that take their, their dogs out to the lake, you know, and nobody else is around.
Yeah.
And they go out there and they train them.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and technically they're in violation because they, they aren't on a leash and they haven't got permission prior to going out there, and a lot of people wait until the last minute. I mean, their plans change.
This, this is Eric. If, so I, I'll, I'll just kind of give you kind of a, a user's perspective and then kind of a, a suggestion. So a- as a runner, it drives me crazy when people have their dogs off-leash because they may be very well-trained or they may not be very well-trained, but I don't know that, and I've been chased by dogs and harassed and, and I've gotten into yelling matches with people, um, because they don't have their dogs leashed on, on the Platte River Trailway. Um, so that, so that, a- a- as a user, that, that bugs me. Um, but on the other hand, I've also taken my dogs out to the lakes and trained them. I, and so, you know, I wonder if it's not based upon kind of where you're at. I mean, you know, I, Fondrosa Park, I used to take my dogs out there and let them run all the time, because it's just wide open. But, you know, that's different than, than, you know, having them off-leash in a congested area at Rotary Park. So, um, that's a little bit of my own kind of editorial, but I, I think there's, there's different ways to approach it from a regulatory standpoint. I guess what does give me pause is to, you know, if we have it on the books and we're not going to enforce it, then I think we run into a, a, a situation where if we're selectively enforcing it, that could cause some problems too. So, um, anyway, just food for thought.
Okay, well then, hearing that, let me, let me throw this out there. If, if, in the revision of this, um, as I'm looking at best practices, maybe I could look at areas, at park areas around, uh, more out west where we can see parks that have made special provisions, and we can word it to where, um, it's dogs, cats, other pets are prohibited unless they are created basically on leash in, in specific areas listed, and we could, we could even list that, um, on the parks page, or we can put an appendix in there. Um, and then we could also list areas where they are allowed to be off-leash. Is that something you guys are interested in looking at?
I think that would be a fair.
I'd, I'd be interested in that. That's good.
Okay.
You know, because I, I, I agree with Eric, you know, if, if you're in a, we're somewhere there, there's not a lot of people, that's one thing. Uh, you know, if you're at Rotary Park, it's kind of a different story, because there's a lot of people that operate there, but Fondrosa Park or Pathfinder, you know, you may or may not see anybody else out there when you're there.
I, I agree. Um, I've been up on Rotary Park a lot and numer- I mean, almost everyone that I encounter with a dog is off the leash and it's away from the owner. Um, and I, um, when I do see people have it on the leash, I thank them, you know, for keeping their dog on the leash. I've had numerous run-ins on my bike, um, I don't know what the dog's gonna do, um. You know, I think that if we had a clause in there, that would be great, where they could use it, you know, let the dog run at certain parks.
Yeah, Tim, this is Roy. I think, uh, if you can just, see if you can come up with language that makes sense, that's not like two pages long, uh, and, and just bring that to the next meeting, we'll see if we can, can find something we can agree on there.
Okay. And what I'm gonna try to do with this, guys, is actually get this out to you before the meeting, um, within a couple of days before the meeting, that way you've got a chance to chew on it beforehand, um, and that'll give you a chance to make a better informed decision. Is that fair enough?
Yep, nice.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, let's move on in the interest of time from section 10, since we're gonna be revising the fees. Um, this basically gives the Board of Commissioners the ability to, uh, yearly, um, or upon annual review or semi-annual review, look at the fees. Um, and that's, and, and to be honest, that's stuff that we still, as an advisory board, can make recommendations on, uh, if we see that there are needs to, 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 to take note when it comes to certain fees. Um, so, uh, this is written fairly, it's, it's written, it's written well. Any, anybody have any additions on that one? Um, when it comes to section 12, fires, uh, I don't see any comments written on this one. And this, there are some things when it comes to fires, and I'm going with my southern in there, guys, I apologize, um, but when it comes to fire pits and fires in the parks, there are some things that can supersede this, and it, like, in a sense, the cabins have their own set of rules when it comes to the, to the fire pits. Um, as well as other areas, um, but I would say they're fairly consistent with what I'm seeing here. But it does leave, if, it does leave, uh, a, a clause in there where if all of a sudden we see that, that fires don't need to happen anywhere, the board may prohibit fires on parklands or facilities at any time with notice.
Tim, we've already got that written. That's in, that's in state law and it's also in county law. If it's declared a, a red flag warning, we can shut down everything, and the county fire marshal who's, might, can declare that, or any of the towns can. So that's already, that's already in a, that's already established, and we don't have to have that reiterated in here at all.
Good, good. Section 13, can we already get to that one quickly? Yeah?
Tim, can I, can I go back to 12? Do we want to allow fires in Rotary Park?
Then it may be one of those things in this, I'm, I'm looking for a clause. Doesn't it, a campsite is permitted when the fire can find?
Yeah, but there's no camping in Rotary Park.
Right.
And that's what, that, that's one of the things that everybody that lives around there has been highly concerned about.
Are there just fire pits there, or are there also, are there also like a grill? I, I can't remember, I don't really stop at the, at the day use areas there. Is it just?
There's fire pits.
I'm gonna agree with a fireman here, this is Stuart, uh, and all the owners there. You know, I think prohibiting firing fires of any kind in Rotary Park is something we really ought to think about.
I agree. I'm looking for a way that we can, we can word it.
Well, unless we have that in a container, grill, or something that's commercially designed.
This is Eric, could, could, uh, under section 20, special areas, we have some Rotary Park specific rules, and if we're concerned about, you know, i- i- if, if the rules on, on fire in section 12 for, for the rest of the county park system is acceptable, I mean, we could just carve it out for Rotary Park, that, you know?
Okay. Now, is there a?
I think.
I didn't want to speak on top of someone there. I guess.
I think putting it in that section would be good.
Yes. Well, I guess that's where, in that same line, is it a way of putting it in this section that special rules for fires may be park-specific? Is that a, a correct way to put it, Eric?
I mean, we certainly can. I think just from a, a statutory or rule construction standpoint, the more specific, um, provision's gonna trump the general, you know, provision. So, I mean, you could have general rules in section 12 pertaining to fires in parks, but then if we specifically in section 20A say that, you know, no, no open fires, or however you, whatever you guys decide you want to do in Rotary Park, um, then that specific prohibition would, would trump section 12. So, so you, you could put that in there in 12, I, I'm just not sure that it's necessary.
Okay. In other words, whatever you put in section 20, you can say this trumps section 12, basically.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you could just say notwithstanding Section 12, fires are prohibited within Rotary Park.
Okay. Because I think all of us are agreeing that, you know, as we get to that, we can look at Rotary Park specific and make sure that we look at the fire in that, okay?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, Section 13, Fishing and Hunting and Trapping. That's very, um, very specific there. Um, and some of these things are going to come up when it comes to dealing with um, groups that want to use certain areas. A specific example, the other day, I had a group that's wanting to use Bear Trap and they're wanting to do demonstrations for kids with outdoor recreation events all across. And I brought up that, you know, because they said something about archery. And I said, the only thing I'm having difficulty with here is the archery because of the items that's mentioned in this. And then I think it is another section when it comes to weapons. Uh, projectile devices, basically firearms or other projectile devices may be used by the public in designated areas only. So my question, Eric, would that give me, as a parks director or the Board of Commissioners, the opportunity to say, "We temporarily designate Bear Trap because of the special event to have a certain area for archery"? Is that something that could be done according to this clause?
Yes, I think it could. That's exactly what I was going to suggest. I think if you had a group that wanted to, you know, get a permit to do some archery demonstrations, you know, in Bear Trap on a specific date, then through that permit, then you would just have to designate the area in which they could do it and, you know, post it, make sure that there are certain safety precautions are in place. But I think that would allow the county the flexibility to do that.
That's great. That gives us the opportunity to work with a large amount of groups and gives us the opportunity to designate that from a risk management standpoint. That's good. Um, anything else on that, guys?
Um, I have one comment. This is Roy. Uh, under Section 13, I wonder if we should add something to the effect that if a person is, is, uh, doing fishing, hunting or trapping for commercial purposes, such as a person guiding somebody through a county parks area, that they would need to apply to the director for a permit for that.
I think the only theory-
That comes from-
Would that be more for fishing? Is that the reason why you're saying that?
Well, that comes from a fishing guide. Uh, actually, uh, um, can't remember who exactly brought that up, but it's a specific issue that was brought up by a licensed fishing guide that there were people that were coming in to some county parks areas launching landing boats and guiding people for commercial use from county park areas. And, uh, his reasoning was that they should have to have a permit for that.
I have a hard time with that.
I don't agree with that either.
I have a real hard time with that because, uh, they have every bit as much right to be there. Just because he's a fishing guide, um, if they're legally there, I have a hard time restricting somebody else from doing that, so.
Well, no, we're not talking about restricting. It would be no different than having any other vendor doing commercial operations in county parks. We require those people to have permits and special use permits. Um, why wouldn't we require it from a commercial guide?
And let me add to that, what you're saying. Um, in a lot of the areas where these guides are launching from, they are giving a permit to BLM. Um, and, you know, that's part of their permitting process. And the, I believe it was two work sessions ago where that comment did come up, where it, for the county to consider doing permitting from those areas as well and tagging along with BLM on there. That is something that could be done. The question is, does this Section 13 give the Board of Commissioners the flexibility to do that in the future under this rule?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Eric. I guess what I would suggest is that Tim and I take a closer look at this. Because I'm just trying to, I mean, I know this came up as well and I know that there's some interplay with some other permitting that BLM requires. And I'm just trying in my mind to kind of parse this out. You know, are we regulating activities on the water? I mean, is that within our purview? Is it a game and fish issue? I mean, I think it can be done, but I guess I haven't really thought long and hard enough about it to really navigate it very well. So I think this is probably an issue where we probably need to take a closer look. And then we can come back to the board and say, "Well, if you choose to require it, here are the, here's how we would recommend doing it and here's the challenges." And then you guys can obviously make the final decision.
I think we at least need to do that due diligence and take a look at it and just make sure we're covering our bases there.
Okay, that's great. All right. Uh, Permit, Special Use and Reservations. Let's look very closely at this, guys. I'm gonna, sporting events, races, pageant, reenactment, basically all of these type things. Public spectator attractions or participant activities are prohibited unless written permission therefore has been given by the board. Um, and they're given a permit. Board basically designates the Parks and Recreation Department to do this. This gives us the flexibility to look at permits and decide when, you know, and it gives the board and our Parks Department, looking at this, special use permits and everything, it gives us the opportunity to decide when we need to charge fees or when we need to waive fees. Um, but it does say, basically looking at this, that anybody who wants to do a race on the mountain or at the lake, a pageant or anything else, goes through this permitting process through the parks. And that gives us, if anybody, if a law enforcement official or myself, if I'm doing rounds on a Saturday and I see a special event going on and there has been no permit, it gives us the authorization to shut that event down at that point in time. From what I'm reading.
Yeah, I think that was the, that was the purpose of that, was just to give us some latitude to control events. And also, as a way to look at the schedule, to make people come in and do a permit so that you didn't have two huge events going on the same weekend.
Correct, correct. All right. All the rest of this looks good. The one thing that comes into play a lot of times with the groups coming in, special use, they're asking to camp in areas that are not designated camping areas. And the reason I'm referring to that is I like the way that we have put in there when it comes to the camping. Because this gives me, as a director, the teeth to be able to say, when they're asking for specific camping areas, to be able to say, "This is not something that we can work out with this permit." Because the reason for the designated camping areas is to decrease the amount of impact on our land over the years. Would you agree with that?
There is one problem that I can think of immediately. Is we just incorporated that area out in Pathfinder that actually has outhouses. Uh, but it doesn't have any designated camping areas that I'm aware of. It's on the west side of the arm out by Bishop's Point.
Okay.
So, that's one area that we really don't have established camp sites. People have been camping there for years. We actually have an outhouse built over there and everything else. So, that's the only place that I can think of right off the top of my head that would really throw a kink into that.
Okay. So I guess the thing to do would be look at the feasibility of making that a designated camping area.
Well, we have it in the park now. For a long time it wasn't in the park. It was just outside the park boundary, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we could actually establish specific sites. I mean, they wouldn't have to be developed sites, but we could actually set up specific sites over there if, you know, if that's what we chose to do.
Okay. I'm gonna write that down as a question with that. All right, anything else when it comes to special use permits and things like that? Good, all right. Um, make sure. Section 16, Preservation of Public Property. There's been no comments when it comes to this. I think it's, uh, very simple. Basically, anytime a change is going to be made on property, in a sense, permits. Anything else when it comes to 16? All right. Um, Public Safety. Unless otherwise provided on park lands, no person shall, and it goes point to point there. Uh, there was one, possess a knife with a blade six inches or longer in length. I guess you decided that that one wasn't necessary to have in there?
No, because there are people up there that use a variety of, you know, knives for all kinds of purposes that are longer than six inches. And I think that that was just, um, basically unenforceable.
Yeah, a lot of the fishing knives when it comes to cleaning and stuff like that, yeah, I agree. So, okay. Um, Sanitations. I'm not seeing anything that's been written when it comes to the sanitation. And after looking at this myself, it's, again, self-explanatory. Uh, no pallets allowed within county parks. Basically, we're encouraging people not to bring a bunch of other stuff into the parks for making their own. Good. Um, any other on Section 18? Section 19, Solicitation. That's important. Any comment on that one?
Um, I would just make the same comment I did before as far as the guides go.
Okay. Basically, that's something that could go between Section 13 and Section 19?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's something Eric and I can look at. I mean, and that goes into the other one before where it talks about food trucks and various things like that. They must have a permit to be able to come in there, so.
Correct.
Yep. All right. I want to make a suggestion. Let's skip Rule 20, or number, Section 20 for now, and let's go over the other ones and come back to Section 20. Is that fair enough? Okay, hearing nothing. Here we go. Uh, let's go to Section 21, Special Regulations. This is dead on when it comes to any facility being added, any trail being added. Various things like that need to come through us and need to be, because it's an addition to the park, the board gives us the final authority on that as far as our processes. And that's when it comes to our dealings with the Board of Reclamation, Board of, Bureau of Land Management, and any other trail construction or facility construction, all right. Um, Section 22, Designated Trail Use. This one, is it potentially a hot topic, but let's tackle it. Um, the questions that I've seen so far have been ski, fat tire bikes, winter multi-use trails, systems must have a valid trail pass in possession at all times. It's difficult to be able, on some of the ski outfits and various things like that, it's difficult to display it with every one of them, but simply, that's a good way to put it, must have it in possession. And the law enforcement officers or a park staff have the ability to be able to approach a person and ask for the pass by this. And it talks about parks and emergency vehicles performing maintenance, management or emergency functions are allowed. Others must use, approved by the parks, must be approved by the parks superintendent or director of Parks, Recreation and Leisure, okay? Now, this doesn't deal with designation of trails in here unless I'm seeing it wrong. Am I correct?
It does not, this does not specifically designate trails. Um, and I don't know, it just says in Section, subsection A, it just says all designated trails. And I guess my assumption was that designated trails would be trails that would appear on a, a map.
A map and/or kiosk.
Yes.
But to be able to say all designated trails are open to foot traffic, is that supposed to be a comma there? Or a period?
No, it's a period.
So we're basically saying every single trail is going to be open to foot traffic. Is that right?
No, it isn't. In the wintertime, foot traffic is not allowed on the ski trails or on Eamesville trails.
Right. So if we're looking at this, we need to modify this statement because it says here, "All designated trails are open to foot traffic."
Yeah, but read the rest of that, Section 8.
Okay.
It's covered.
Okay.
It says, "Foot traffic, other than snowshoeing on winter multi-use trails, is prohibited without special authorization." So, and we did it that way specifically for Nordic ski events. You may have, you know, family and fans who want to walk out on the trails and watch their kid at a Nordic ski event. They have the ability to do that by special permission, with special authorization.
Okay.
I like the way that's written, the way it is.
Okay. The biggest thing I'm wanting to make sure is that we have the ability to enforce when we need to enforce. So that, I'm good with that.
Yep, I mean, you do have that exception below, but, um, it wouldn't hurt to add something into that first part, you know, as far as, I'm not quite sure what, how to put it. But when the, if the trail's not groomed or something like that, that everybody, then it's open. And then that covers you below, you know, that you can do it if you have special authorization.
Well, and that-
Well, we might just do what Tim was talking about right at the beginning, is just that first sentence. Just say, "All designated trails are open to foot traffic, comma, bicycle and equestrian use where designated."
That would be a whole lot better.
Yeah, I think so too.
That'd be a whole lot better because right now, I agree with Tim, that sounds like you could always walk on there. And even if you walk down, look down below, it's like, yeah, well- And even if you walk down, look down below, it's like, yeah, well, that's gonna, that would be hard to enforce the way it's written. But if you, if you change that to a comma, it does make it, it make, makes it a lot more enforceable.
Yeah, I, I would be, I would be good with that.
Okay. Alright, I'll look at a, at a rephrasing of that first statement, uh, to make it more enforceable. Um, and then we can, we can. Alright, um.
And Tim, just like some of the other sections, go through and renumber those.
Okay.
Letter them.
Good point.
We don't have an F, but we have a G, but we have an H. Don't have an H, we have an I, you know, those sort of things. Just clean them up.
Okay.
I think that's true with 21 above. We want A, B, B.
Good, good point. Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, um, and you can see where, where, uh, we've already discussed that in the definition when it comes to Dave Mallory asking, uh, to define electric bikes and fat tire bikes. Um, and we've, we've already addressed that issue in the top, top section. Would you all agree there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Except for snow bike. Snow bikes, we have not.
Uh, snow bikes and fat tire bikes are the same thing. So there's, the snow bike and a fat tire bike are, are the, this, as far as the, the definition, 3.8 inch tire designed to run low pressure, uh, they're the same thing.
So we probably need to say that up in definitions if we're referring to a snow bike down there. Section 22.
I don't think we need to because there, there really is no such thing as a snow bike.
Well, I think a snow bike, I think of a bike with some skis on it, 'cause we used to have those back in the day. And they, they still rent them.
Yeah, what I was thinking about when you said a snow bike was a motorcycle style with a, with a ski in the trailer.
Well, there's another one, yeah. So, you know, we need to make sure we're good on that death. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, now, I will look, look further into that one. That's a good, good point to bring up.
We got snow bikes, Jim, we got snow bikes being used over by Athlon area. I don't think that has been a problem. You know, little kids seem to be using them. And that's with the, you know, the ski on the front.
Okay. Was that, I couldn't understand your everything, Jim. Say again?
Over the Biathlon area, some little kids over there have been riding snow bikes. And that's with the, you know, small bikes for little kids with a ski on the front. And that seems to be in okay over there. So I don't know if we need to, uh, address that.
Well, that's a good point. It's a good point from what Stuart's saying. Maybe we could just put that in the definition when it comes to bikes in the, in the, in the, uh, put snow bike in there and that, that allows for that.
Sure.
Okay. Good. Alright, um, section 23, vehicles.
Can we, can we back up on A really quick, on section 22A?
Okay.
Do we need, do we need to, um, put in what it says, use trails during the winter months is prohibited without special authorization? Do we need to specify where they can get that, you know, where people can get authorization?
Special authorization from, um, we can add.
From, from the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, section 22A.
So foot trap, foot traps other than snowshoeing on winter multi-use trails during the winter months is prohibited without special authorization. So it would be like if there's a ski race?
Right.
And you have spectators. So do they, do they just get authorization from the ski coaches? I'm, I'm assuming?
Well, if it comes special authorization from the board, the, in that situation, the board can give, I mean, by, by wording it in, just as we have done in other areas, by putting in there special authorization from the board, gives us the permission to be able to, the board passes it to the parks director or superintendent. Uh, but the authorization comes from the board. And that's where it's in other areas. So I think if we just add that to the wording, that's a good point out.
Okay.
Alright, anything else on 22? Alright, uh, 23, vehicles. I don't see where anyone has written any addendums on here. I think the thing that this would allow us to do if it's passed as, like this, it allows us to improve our signage.
Yeah, and this has been going through pretty, pretty specifically according to Wyoming state statutes.
Yep. Okay, um, anything else here? Okay, section 24, off-road vehicle regulations. Again, this looks like another one you have gone over when it comes to, uh, Wyoming state statutes. I think it mirrors what's in there. And the, the one exception is there golf carts equipped with two working headlights, two hell, taillights. This helps me. Uh, slow-moving vehicle placard clearly visible from the rear of the golf cart driven by a licensed driver may be used to travel the area from the intersection of Lakeview Road and Lakeshore Drive south to Fremont Canyon. Um, can anybody, just give me some reasoning why this was, uh, exception added?
I'd love to, but it's pretty ugly. Um, that was something that was agreed two years ago for that area for the, the trailer owners, the cabin owners, not, the cabin owners, not the leaseholders, um, and that whole area over there. So they came up with this compromise and there are a lot of people who have those.
Okay.
Again, this is not cabin area. This is trailer, marina, ski club. All those people can then travel up and down on their little golf cart.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, and, and the only reason I'm asking is 'cause I saw the exception. And I guess as a new parks director, I just wanted to get some history on it. That's, that's good information.
We'd love to put a trail on that same area off of the road. Then we could have hiking and biking and all that's in the master plan, but I digress.
Well, that, that's good information. We can actually look at that as we move forward. That gives us the flexibility to do that. Thank you. Alright. Alright, section 25, water sports, designated swimming areas. Anything? Okay. So on the beach areas, no animals are allowed on designated posted beach areas. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, some beaches are posted, no, no animals.
Okay. Uh, the water sports, boating. Um, my guess is all of these are within the Wyoming statutes, basically.
Could be. The only one I'd like to add, but we need more public input on, is probably those wake boats, surf boats and what they're doing to the beach area. Or maybe that's something that more comes from BOR.
As far as, uh, looking at.
Oh, the wake board. The wake, the wake boats put out such a big wave behind them so that they can ride their, their boards on them. That's what he's talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it's just, yeah.
They, uh, concapsized boats, kayaks, those sort of things. And then they wipe the people off the beaches and, yeah, it's, I don't know that we can do anything about that here.
It's worth looking into. And just to make sure I understand again, the question is wakeboarding, right?
It, it's more of a surf, wakeboard and surf boat. They actually fill them with water so that they can make a bigger wake, so they can surf behind their boats.
Okay.
And it's that wake that's disrupting, disrupting everything from fishermen to, you know, everybody on the beach, et cetera.
Okay.
It's a very expensive boat.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that under a study and try to maybe look at some, if there's been some other studies put out by them. And if anybody else can, can find some information on that and care to share that with the group between now and the next meeting, that'll be helpful. Anything else on that?
Is, is it an erosion concern also, or?
I would say from listening to that question, it's not as much an erosion concern as it is a experience and safety concern, if that's what I'm hearing, right Stuart?
It's both, actually. Yeah, that does get up and erode on the docks and, you know, around all the lake shoreline.
Okay. Alright. So I'm gonna put on there from erosion and safety as far as a study on that one. Okay? Anything else, guys? Great, alright. Um, getting closer to the end here, uh, number 27. Emergency situations, parks board may provide temporary exceptions to the general rules for a specific park by posting notice of such exception at said park. And if we have to do that, we're gonna, we will do that. Now, now here it says parks board. We may wanna reword that where it says, um.
Just say the board.
Yeah, the board. 27.
Hey, this is Eric. On, on 27, do you wanna say the board or designate? I mean, if it's an emergency situation, I mean, it may be something that the director or, or, you know, staff has to, has to implement something immediately.
Okay. So we'll maybe, maybe put that back to the parks director as well. So. Good point. Alright, um. The sayings clause in number 28, if any provision of these rules, um, held invalid in conflict of these rules, such a situation shall not be deemed to invalidate any of the individual provisions of these rules. That's, that's one of Eric's law statements there. Was that, am I right there, Eric?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, penalty clause, same things. These are something that, it's the law is when it comes to this. My own southern way of saying that. Um, these are statements that we cannot do without on here. Um, and I would, I will say as we move further down, um, there are some, looks like some adopted, explain what's going on in B. It's a constitute notice to appear to every, every person charged with violation of the Nitrona County Parks rules listed below. Um, what's going on in the below statements here?
So this is Eric. I think it's just, um, it's, it's kind of legal process here. It's, it's just indicating how certain violations will be ticketed and that, uh, you know, fixing or depositing the ticket will serve as notification to appear. I mean, I think it's, you know, the, the sheriff's department could probably go into more uh, detail on, on how this works from a nuts and bolts standpoint. But I, I think this is, I mean, just looking through this primarily procedural.
Okay. That's fair enough. Okay. Uh, I was just trying to make sure everybody understood what was going on there. Alright, um, we've gone over everything, but the one that we skipped, which basically deals with all of our parks that are special use areas. I'm gonna skip A for a section. We'll come back to that one 'cause that's gonna be the one that's more of a hot topic. Uh, A and B, actually. Um, but then Casper Mountain, let's look at that one to start with, then we'll go back to A and B. Um, camping prohibited during the winter months unless permitted by the board. All of these Fremont Canyon parking lot adjacent area. Do you see any issues with the Casper Mountain in C or D? Moving along to Sandy Beach, Alcova. And then the other areas when it comes to Lakeshore Drive, special use area, Memorial Archery, Archery Range, Casper Mountain, um, where basically it talks about hunting, alcohol, um, no broad, broadhead arrows. Uh, Crimson Dawn Park, no food or beverage is permitted with Crimson Dawn Park at any time. So am I, am I safe to say here that this doesn't even allow it if there's a wedding up there? In the pavilion area?
So Eric, I have a question about Crimson Dawn. Is that something that was originally in the deed? Does that seem odd to anyone? Like that when we took it over?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I mean, there are specific restrictions in, in the deed and, um, and I don't recall, I mean, it is day use. Yeah, I'd have to look and see if any of those are specifically mentioned. I, I would say that posts and those are, are consistent with, um, I think what the intent was, but we, we can certainly cross-reference this with the deed restrictions and see if, and see if they're contained within the deed.
Okay. I'd like to make that, make a note of that because I know that question comes up when it comes to people renting, uh, the area like for a wedding or for a family reunion or such. And to be able to have an answer for that. So yes, I'll, I'll, I'll make that as a, a note for us to cross-reference that. And if it's something that needs to be changed, you know, it's something that we can look at. Um, Ponderosa Park, no camping permitted. And I must admit, moving to Wyoming, this was one of the terms I'd never heard before, slash pile area. We didn't have that in North Carolina, so this was new. Any, uh, any additions or problems with that one? Okay, um, and then the, I guess the thing to do is go, let's go back to the two hot topic areas. Guys, thank y'all for moving through all of these in a very teamwork type way. This, this is very helpful. Thank you so much. I think, I think I moved past it. My happy scroll finger here. Special areas Rotary Park, Casper Mountain. Rotary Park is a day use area only. The park is closed from November 15th through March 15th. I wanna stop right there for a minute because some of the public comments have been to consider staying open year round.
So one of the biggest issues with keeping it open in the winter, and I'll be honest, um, I use it in the winter, have used it in the winter in the past. But, uh, the problem comes from, uh, plowing the parking lot.
Right.
Is almost impossible to do. And so it becomes a safety issue. If a car gets down in there and gets stuck, it's almost impossible to get them out.
Right.
And, uh, it, it, it can become a big, big problem on heavy snow days and things like that. So, um, that, that is one of the issues. So that, um, So, um, that- that is one of the issues. So that, um, a lot of that comes from Mike, um, Hagler, and, uh, just, uh, he- he considers that a- a big safety concern in the wintertime.
Well, and then being able to maintain that parking lot, you're exactly right. That is a- at this point with- within our park ability, it's not something that we could do. Um, so would you all agree that at this point in time, we keep it November to March 15th, giving myself, uh, whoever the Parks Director is at the time, the ability to use his discretion that these conditions may be opened later or earlier? It leaves it with an administrative decision. Are you good with this bullet point?
Hey, hey, Tim?
Yes.
Maybe- maybe to solve that, maybe we should say something to the nature of it's not open to- to vehicle traffic during those months.
I would agree. Put something maybe that the gate is closed from those periods.
Yeah. Yeah, because that way people can still go in there and snowshoe and stuff like that, but they're not gonna have, they're not gonna be able to get in there and block it off, and Mike's not gonna have to worry about going in there and plowing around cars and trucks and everything else and creating problems.
Okay.
So, so this is Eric.
Boy, I- I would agree with that.
Yeah, I- I guess the only thing I would just bring up is enforcement. So like, we've got other rules that say you gotta stay on the trail, um, things like that, and- and I guess just to be aware that, you know, and I know people that go in there and snowshoe, and I- I think people like to, but I think that there are some challenges in terms of how do you enforce activities, you know, up in that, uh, area during the winter when the snow gets deep. I mean, we're not gonna be patrolling, I mean, those types of things. So I- I- I would agree. I think what I've heard primarily, the- the issue is safety with- with regard to maintaining a lot. Um, but then there's also enforcement up within the park itself, and then if- if the gate is closed, I guess, and- and I can't, in my mind, think, is that gonna force them out onto the road to park? Or where, if people are gonna come up there to use it, where- where are they gonna park if- if it's, uh, the parking lot's closed?
Well, that- that is the biggest problem, and I guess that's the part that would discourage a lot of people because if they didn't have place to park, they're not going to, but, um, but it seemed like a lot of the people that were commenting about wanting to be able to go up there and snowshoe were the people that were living adjacent to the park. I mean, I saw a few comments from other people, but most of the ones that I saw were actually people that live up in that area, you know, that really wouldn't have to park to- to get into it, so.
Do we know, um, 'cause I was just up there two days ago, and when you drive in, the- the upper parking lot is, there's no snow, and then you can't drive down in. So do- do we know what part is plowed? Right now, do we, because if those parking areas, like when I was up there, they're exposed, you can park. Are those plowed, just the- the very upper part? Um, and then he doesn't plow, so when you drive down-
Tina, Tina Mike said- Yeah, Tina Mike, Mike was indicating that he was, he had trouble getting in there because he didn't have anywhere to turn around with the plows and stuff like that. When you get in there with a, uh, you know, with a plow truck, they take a lot of room to turn around, so if you have somebody parked in, you know, even what appears to be an open area, they still can't turn around very easily, and that's where the problem comes in.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've had trouble on the path there where even when we did plow a little bit, we tried to blow up, block off the dirt road, people moved our blocks and still got their butt stuck down in there and caused a problem.
Right.
So, you know, closing the gate really solves a lot of problems whenever it's a good time to do it, and that'd be for Tim to decide. You know, if we have a November that's not turning snowy, he can keep that gate open longer, et cetera. Um, I would like to go back to doing something on the gate. If people can get there, I mean, there's a walking trail halfway up the mountain road now. People could get there and hike, right? Do we care where they park? We, there's already rules about where they can't park.
So I would say this one needs some more discussion, um, to look at just because, yes, there's a lot of issues that come up with that, so would you say that we need to look at more discussion on this particular topic as we approach the night, April 9th, or, excuse me, yeah, April 9th?
The biggest thing, Tim, is that, you know, those numbers we kinda threw out there, but it's like last year, you could've gotten up there all year round because we didn't have hardly any snow. And then you have a year like this, yeah, where we did have snow, but it came late, and then you have a year like this and, uh, you know, and it's just the opposite. Everything's been, I mean, Muddy Mountain was shut down in October this year, and it usually doesn't shut down until the end, or it's close to the end of November. So, it, that discretion part in there, we left to you.
Right.
Just because, just because of the change in climate that we have. I mean, you just, we never know what we're gonna get, so.
That does, yeah, it gives us administrative discretion.
It does, and that's- that's really what it comes down to. And as far as parking goes, if they're parking in a- in a place that they're not supposed to, there's already, there's already rules in place where they can be towed or other things, you know, if they're- if they're creating a hazard, so.
Right. Okay.
I like the idea of locking the gate when we have it closed.
Right.
And allowing people to walk in there or go in there in other manners, uh, without restricting that during the wintertime.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and Eric- Eric Nelson can plug his ears right now, but what I would say is this is another one of those that, uh, you have that small group of people that, uh, they've snowshoed up there forever, and we can do whatever we want, say whatever we want, and they're going to continue to snowshoe, and there's really nothing we can do about it unless you have a deputy sitting there waiting to catch them when they come out. So I- I would be for having walk-in access as long as they're not breaking the rules as far, and making it unsafe situation by parking their vehicles on the road.
Okay.
I don't know if we can rewrite that or something. I don't know.
I say-
We- we can, we can work on some- some wordsmithing to accomplish that, so it'd be kind of a seasonal parking closure or something like that, and, you know, but we, yeah, we, Tim and I can work on that.
Yep. Okay. Um, another one of the hot topics is going to the next section. Um, Rotary Park shall be open daily from 5:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Um, there has been some requests to close it earlier.
Well, the- the reason that it says 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM is primarily because the discussion was we were going to close the park November through March when the- when the daylight hours are shorter, and we need consistency in all the signage so that everybody knows that you cannot be there after this time, and it usually, and some signs say dusk to dawn, some signs say a time. Um, we just had to have it, uh, our discussion was making it black and white so that everybody knows during the primary hours when that park is- is open seasonally, that this is when you cannot be in there, because we have people breaking in there and doing parties at night, and this was primarily for law enforcement so that they had a black and white time that- that they could go in and cite people.
The dusk till dawn, I agree, is a- is a tougher one to enforce. The, when you put a time up there, 5:00 AM till 10:00, 10:00 PM, that- that's a very, that's extremely easily, it's easier to enforce. Um, the consideration has been- been asked at various times in the year, do we have a winter rule and a summer rule? As far as the time is concerned? That's been some of the input.
Well, we would need to look at that if we allow the park to be open year round.
Um, is that something that we can say, uh, and I guess throw in the question, is that something that we can say Rotary Park operating hours, um, shall be up to the Board and the Director of Parks and Recreation, so that way when the, when, if, when and if we say that we're doing it during a certain time of year, it gives us the flexibility to look at what's best for that park specifically when it comes to quiet hours and enforcement, and then we can, that gives us flexibility to post it on the website and on the kiosk, 'cause that's something that we can do, Eric.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think, yeah, you can fashion it this in kind of pretty much any- any way you want. I- I guess the, you know, concern I would have is so we have some consistency and so the public knows, you know? Um, I mean, that could be a messaging issue as well, but, but I mean, I agree. I mean, if we make changes on the seasonal usage, then- then we need to probably look at the, uh, hours of operation as well.
Okay. Alright. Those questions have been added, so we can look at those. Uh, I think everybody agrees with, uh, the third one. No alcohol is allowed in Rotary Park. That gives no exceptions. Um, and that trumps all the other rules where people attempt to get permits for weddings and various things like that. Rotary Park, it is not a consideration. Um, hiking is desi- is restricted to designated trail system. Um, I'm throwing a question mark up in my own mind, um, on that one. Give me a reasoning for why we put that in there.
Because people were cutting corners and, uh, basically busting across, uh, switchbacks and things like that.
Okay.
And this is, this is one of the things where it was unenforceable the way it's written, that there's, there's no way to enforce corner cutting and people just randomly cutting across trails.
Okay.
We- we have to have a way to stop that.
Okay.
There's also people up- up there making their own trails, too.
Okay, that helps me in that. Good, good job. Um, additional, additional uses or times may be allowed by Board issued permit or trail use pass.
Yeah, so that, uh, basically says that, uh, let's say that- that we recommend that there's no bicycle use on board, on, on, in Rotary Park. That is telling us that, uh, you have the flexibility for a special event-
Okay.
-to permit, uh, specific trail use during that specific time.
Which means we would close the park to any other activity and allow it for that Board issued permit or trail use pass. Is that correct?
Yeah, potentially, yes.
Okay. Alright. Any issues there? Okay. Um, I think this is something that's- that's widely agreed on. Bicycles are not allowed, or, you know, from what I'm seeing, in most situations, they're not allowed on trails within Rotary Park, specific.
That is, yeah, and- and, uh, Bill, you know, Rotary has come out and said that they don't support having bikes on their trails either, so.
So is that something-
Well, I'm, just to, just to make, uh, clarification, um, I'm not making any other stuff, I'm just saying that that letter came from Bill Schilling. That was not the Rotary Club. The Rotary Club, their position is they have no position. They will support whatever the county recommends.
That's a good comment, 'cause that- that- that did come to Rotary Park, oh, the Rotary Club to me as well on that one. So, what do we recommend when it comes to that? Is that something that we're prepared to talk about?
Um, I don't think it's an issue because, as Eric can attest, um, because of our landowner, um, uh, use permits, so the- the agreements, the easements that we have do not allow bicycles. So because of that reason, we're gonna have to say, uh, bicycles are not allowed. Now, what I would, what I would propose adding to that is the same verbiage as, uh, above that, the sentence above that. Just say bicycles are not allowed on trails within Rotary Park except by, um, uh, an additional use permit by the Board. Because there may, may come a time when we can have some special event that would involve bicycles on those trails, um, by specific permission of the Board.
Well, I say, we won't, we wouldn't even have to make an addition there, that Section 5 allows us to be able to do that.
Yep.
While also, while also making that further statement.
So I, I, that would, that would be my only, I think that, uh, we could basically leave it as is.
Okay. Does everybody, everybody follow what he's saying there?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think, I think you're right with that comment that's above, that we can allow trail use by special conditions. If we get, it's just like if you're having a wake up there or something like that, we say there's no alcohol allowed in Rotary Park, but if we make an exception and we allow a wedding to, or a wedding party up there to have alcohol, we could do that. Uh, if we put no bikes, people are gonna think, no bikes, you know? If you have a special event, that's gonna be advertised and it's gonna go through a permit process. We don't need to necessarily say and/or, because that- that confuses a lot of people.
So just simply, what you're suggesting is, say, additional uses or times may be allowed by Board issued permit or trail use, and let that statement be able to override the other ones, is what you're saying?
Yes. Yes, that's exactly right.
So-
And the only, the only thing that I would recommend, Tim, is that we switch five and six. So that we say, um, bicycles are not allowed on the trails within Rotary Park be number five, and then number six would say additional uses or times may be allowed by the Board issued permit or trail use pass, and have that be the- the final statement in that section.
Yeah, this is Eric. I would, I would agree with that. I think swi- switching up that, uh, that order just makes it a little bit clearer 'cause you have all the specific, you know, um, things that you can't do, and then kind of the catch-all at the end that says, you know, additional uses or times may be allowed with the proper permit.
Okay.
Now, we also wanna add in here, we talked about the no fires at Rotary Park. So we wanna put that in before that statement?
Yes. That should go in above, above that statement.
So what we need to do then is do two things. We need to reword or renumber and then add, uh, no fires of any way, shape, or form, whatever wording we need to do in there, at Rotary Park.
Yes, and then that gives us the ability to provide a special use permit-
Correct.
-for a specific situation.
Correct. Okay. Good. Um, alright, uh, so we've discussed Rotary Park. Let's move on to Bridle Trail, which, um, has a couple of different sections, but it is considered part of Casper Mountain. Um, saying that for my benefit. You guys know where it's at. Um, no vehicles including the way, the way the wording is right here now, um, I think that's the only point in question, is no vehicles including or excluding bicycles as defined herein are permitted on the designated Bridle Trail on Casper Mountain. The Bridle Trail having its trailhead in Rotary Park and traversing Lower Garden Creek Canyon. Um, a lot of the public comment has been, um, including private property where people are passing through private property. That is a whole, a whole other issue if they're on private property, and that is, um, a- a matter between them and law enforcement. Am I correct?
I think that-
I don't understand, because we have, if they have last use agreement. Sorry.
Yeah, I think, you have to look at Section 6 above. It, it basically says, if we have a, a, a memorandum of understanding or a use agreement with a landowner, uh, that, that agreement says no bicycle.
Okay.
And for that reason- And for that reason, I think it needs to say no vehicles, including bicycles. Um, people are not going to like it. I don't particularly like it, but that is the situation we have. The legal situation we have is, uh, no bicycles are allowed per those user agreements. So our rules need to reflect that.
Yeah. So, so Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, so, so, yeah, I would agree. So the easements and the right of ways that, that don't allow bicycle usage, you know, they are what they are. And so our rules need to be consistent. Then the other issue that, that has come up, and, and maybe this is what Tim was alluding to, is some landowners in the area that, that have property, um, through which the Bridle Trail does not pass, um, are upset because of trespassing. And I think that is simply an issue between that landowner and law enforcement. I mean, we can enforce our rules on the Bridle Trail, but, but we can't, you know, address trespassing on neighboring properties. It's, you know, I think, Tim, that's maybe what you were getting at.
Yeah. And that would put the onus upon us once these rules are established to make sure that we have proper signage, um, throughout our trail systems to define what our trail systems are. And that, that gives the, us the, um, ability to be able to do that. And then the landowners can help determine where their property is and, um, however, they need to do some kind of signage for their own property, that's up to them. But we can only do something within our designated trail system. But hearing that, um, when it comes to the Bridle Trail, Mr. Chairman, what you're suggesting is that the wording basically say no vehicles including bicycles as defined herein are permitted on the designated Bridle Trails. Is that what you're saying?
I believe that's what we have to do because of our agreements with the private landowners.
Okay.
And then on Section 6 above, which will become Section 5, um, it would say bicycles are not allowed on the trails within Rotary Park to be consistent.
Okay.
Because of those landowner agreements.
All right. And again, just to clarify for those that are participating in this, and even for those that are looking, um, looking at this on YouTube for, uh, public, um, if you were not, as part of this conversation earlier, we are not making the decision here tonight when we, when we make these suggestions. This is a Board of Commissioners decision, and we are not in the 45-day rule, uh, period at this point. I wanted to remake that statement so that way, uh, people understand where we're at in looking at these decisions. Okay. Uh, any other discussion when it comes to that?
I'd have to say that, Mr. Chairman, you're mighty brave to say what you did, but you're, you're correct. I think we all know it. It's a hard decision, but we got to do that.
Okay.
Well, and I think that, uh, we just need to make sure that, uh, that that, everybody understands why we're doing it is because of the, the agreements. Um, and, and that's basically the only reason. Maybe, and that would be leaving the door open in the future to, uh, maybe revising those agreements or some of those agreements or rerouting the trail. And at that point, we can revisit this. But at this point, I don't think we have a choice as a board legally. We have to, we have to enforce the agreements and make these rules consistent with those agreements.
I guess I would disagree a little bit there because safety is another big reason why. Those trails are just not wide enough for everybody. So I think that point can be made, too, that this is a safety reason.
All right. I want to add one more thing here, and this is something that maybe Eric can, can look at. It may be simple, it may not be, you can tell me. But the additional use times may be allowed by board issued permit or trail pass. Is it, is that a statement that can blanket all of these areas? That gives us as a, as a, gives the Board of Commissioners the opportunity as well as myself, um, and even the Advisory Board, if they look at something for down the future, that if there is a ability to look at something that meets within our rules and within the law, that we could issue a, a temporary permit? Is that something that that statement could blanket all of those areas?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Tim, I, yeah, I think you certainly could do that. I mean, you could make that just kind of the, you know, overall caveat that, that additional uses or times are allowed by the board issued permit. Um, and it, and it not only applies to Rotary Park, but it could apply to the whole park system. And, uh, so, so, you know, certainly, yeah, that's, that's, could be done.
Okay. Good. Um.
But, but just to add to that, Tim, I would say that we, we specifically need to have that statement under Section A Rotary Park. Um, it needs to say additional uses and times may be allowed by the board issued permit or trail use pass. And I also think we need to add that same statement under B.
Well, that's what I was saying in that, that that statement could actually blanket A, B, C, D, all of these special use areas, and gives the board the, the, the ability in the future, without having to go back and make special revisions and go back under review process, it gives the board the flexibility to look at that and to look at the law of the day and see if some, if a special use permit could be done in all of those areas.
Well, if, if we did that, would it make more sense to move five all the way up right under special areas to start with? That, if that way it blankets the whole thing, we start out that way instead of putting it at the very end.
That's something we can look at. Yes, that's, that's a good point. And I mean, I think that's something that.
That's an, that's an area.
That would be a good question.
Yeah, no, I think we can wordsmith it. I mean, we could either put it at the, at the front of Section 20, um, or we can, we can add it as another subsection at the end, you know, do all the specific areas and then just say, you know, for all, all, all of these areas, additional uses or time. I mean, Tim and I can work on the best way to word it.
Yep. Okay.
But I would agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Um, everyone, this ends, basically, we, we saved that one section for last. And again, I want to make a statement for public and all of us to where we understand the, the, the things that we have recommended tonight do not, uh, go into effect. They are not official. Um, the official statement is printed, and I'm going to go back to share that one more time so that even our public who did get a chance to see that earlier gets a chance to see that. Uh, to make sure that we.
But I guess, um, I would say that with, with a few small revisions, I think there's a good chance, you know, barring a riot, um, that we would have a document that we could potentially, uh, hand over to the B O T C on the night.
And I run up on some technical difficulties. Let me, I'm going to look at it back again. Here we go. Okay, I'm there, and I think it should show up on the screen in just a few seconds. Um, to revert back to it, every, everyone, um, yep, there it is. Uh, Natrona County Parks Board, again, is an advisory board created through county resolution such as no final rulemaking authority. However, it plays a crucial role, and tonight's teamwork has really shown how, how valuable this is, um, and final, on guiding the final decision by the Natrona County Board of Commissioners. Um, and then it goes further down to, to talk about basically the 45-day period. Um, if we decide to make a decision on April 9th to put that to the Board of Commissioners, then they would engage in a formal rulemaking process with that and, and intention to adopt the rules. So to the general public, just wanted to make sure that you understand that tonight, um, no formal decisions have been made. We are still in the team working process on that. Anyone else want to make a final comment on that? All right. To the Advisory Board, um, and to the others, uh, that have been in attendance in tonight's meeting, um, want to thank you for your willingness to take your time and work through this tonight. Again, we want to thank our IT department for giving us the ability to do this during COVID-19 restrictions. Um, again, guys, the way that I want to try to work this is we're going to work it through email as we prepare for the agenda for, uh, April the 9th. Um, anything else, guys?
No, I just want to say thank you to everybody. Uh, good work and, uh, hopefully we can get this wrapped up.
Okay. All right, everyone, thank you so much for a positive, positive time, and I look forward to communicating with you as we move through this process. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.